And then I'm gonna call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, December 22nd, 2020, time is 7:03 PM. Okay. My favorite part here, share my screen. So all who can, please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God. Thank you. And now we'll do a little attendance. Not gonna be too hard since I can, oh, I see Dave with us, perfect. Alright, so Holly Bem, absent. Uh, Dave Blumey. Hi Dave, you're on your.
You're on Dave.
Uh, Aaron Levitt Smith, absent. Craig McCormack, absent. Alan Needham.
Here.
William Rice, here. Uh, Richard Cortez.
Here.
Julie Eaton.
Here.
And we know Sean is no longer with us. Alright, so one, two, three regular members at the moment, so both Julie and Rich, I would like to promote you to regular members this evening. As long as you don't object.
No objections.
Okay, it's, it is done. Good, okay. Uh, alright, we didn't have a meeting two weeks ago due to a lack of, lack of agenda items. Uh, but we did meet on November 24th, and there are minutes for that meeting. Alan, are you prepared to lead us through the review of the November 24th meeting?
I am, I, I wasn't at that meeting, but I'll, I'll go through it, I just won't vote.
Okay.
Anything, uh, are we pages numbered? No, okay, um, lines one through 50, first page.
No comment from me.
I didn't see anything there either. Okay, next page, which would be lines 52 through 102.
Nothing from me.
I saw on line 74, I hate to spend our time with titles, that just bugs me, but line 74, the word mean, I think should be meant. At the end of the line.
Yeah, okay, so row 74, line 74, mean should be meant, M-E-A-N-T.
Okay, next page, line 103 through 153.
No comments from me.
Like in this, okay, line 154 to 203.
Nope.
Line 204 through 253.
No comments from me.
Okay, and last page, line 254 to 266. And that's it, can we go home now Bill?
Not quite yet, okay, I make a motion to accept the, uh, the meeting minutes from November 24th, 2020, as amended.
Second.
Dave Blumey, seconds, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, please say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Put me down as not voting.
Oh, I wasn't here either on the 24th.
Okay, so Mike, we have a quorum, but voting members don't meet the minimum, or at least the responding. Uh, we have, we have two out of five, two out of six, one, two out of five, wait a minute, one, two, three, yeah, two out of five are abstaining. So it's, uh, we're not voting?
Well, if it, if they're abstaining, I mean, they're still here, so you technically have a quorum, they're just not voting.
Good.
So I, if this was, if this was an application, I would say that we really should wait until we have a full complement of, of four, minimum of four members, but this is fine.
Okay, thank you Alan, thank you Commissioners, the minutes are accepted as amended. Okay, next item on the agenda is General Commission Business, Discussion Concerning Affordable Housing and Public Comments. Okay, so today, uh, I met with Mike Glidden, Maria Capriola, Eric Wellman, Wendy Masgudis? Is that how you pronounce her name, something like that?
Stukas, I think.
Max Stukas, okay, so she's on the Board of Selectmen. Uh, and we discussed the, um, options that we have dealing with the Affordable Housing Plan. Um, I explained that the plan that, that we've drafted up, uh, primarily focuses on satisfying the requirements of 8-30J. And although there are some, what I'll say, novel ideas, um, mentioned in the plan, it doesn't go into a great detail of any of the particular, uh, actions. No, and then I also explained that it, it was the Commission's consensus that, uh, the input from the public listening sessions, was pretty clear that several of the speakers expected the Affordable Housing Plan to, to do a lot more than what, what we have drafted at this point. Um, so we discussed the two ends of the spectrum, that's kinda how I bracketed it, and, um, you know, different options and ways, ways to approach it, and, um, I think, now I think, I know that the, uh, the Board of Selectmen is in agreement with me, um, where I think if a, if a more comprehensive or more holistic plan is desired by the town, that it needs to be prepared by someone with a little more experience and maybe breadth of knowledge than the body of knowledge we have on the Planning Commission. So, kind of, uh, toyed around with the idea of a task force or an advisory committee, uh, that could be established, probably, uh, stood up by the, uh, Board of Selectmen. And we talked about the composition of that, that task force a little bit, but it was more conceptual. So then I, I made a suggestion, Dave, did you bring wine for everybody?
I have a black screen, I didn't think you could see me.
I see you. Don't stand up, I don't wanna see what you're wearing from hand.
Well, I'm glad you can still see me, because I, I have a black screen.
Okay, yeah, we see you.
Alright.
Um, so I, I suggested, I made a suggestion that the, uh, the Planning Commission, um, kinda complete our, our, uh, effort and activity on the, the current draft, and submit it to, well, sorry, with the addition of another action item, we'll have to weave this in somehow, that the Board of Selectmen, uh, consider putting together some type of advisory committee to, uh, understand what level of, uh, commitment that the town wants to put into the different, uh, opportunities for affordable housing. And the way I explained it is if we, you know, if we issue, uh, the, the draft, or the final version that we come up with, for all intents and purposes, we comply with 8-30J, that we will have issued our Affordable Housing Plan, uh, and in there, uh, will be terminology or wording that can act as a springboard to further, further development. So it's kinda like the best of both worlds, um, and Maria, um, I, I think was more or less in agreement, but she, she did make a comment that town staff is stretched pretty thin at the moment, and, uh, the likelihood of, of being able to establish an advisory board or a task force that would also involve town staff, uh, would have to wait a little while. So, to me, that reinforces the, the, you know, the, the need to issue our Affordable Housing Plan as it stands with its slight adjustment, so we don't, you know, become subject to any of the penalties that may arise for not submitting the plan, or having the plan approved.
So, Bill, a question, um, in looking through the documents that were, uh, in the Dropbox, one of the things that I saw there was a, that the state had provided money for preparing an affordable housing plan. Now, it appeared that though we've gone beyond the date for which they, uh, where that was available, but maybe, uh, Mike knows whether or not they have consumed all of that money, and is it possible to, uh, you know, to apply for additional funds, and in so doing, we could get some additional professional help in putting Affordable Care Housing Plan together?
So, uh, we actually, Bill, is already, if I, I'll, I'll take this one?
Yeah, go ahead.
We discussed this, and, um, what we were discussing was possible, uh, financing options that are available, we may have a way to fund it without asking for money from the state. Um, and these state grants were granted, and it was only, see, I found out it was $15,000 each community. So, you're talking about basically we pay a consultant to do just a step above what we have, to fulfill the general requirements of 830J. What we were discussing was going beyond, and maybe a, a larger budget, um, which we may have the funds to do.
Okay, I just, I, I was, that was the first I had become aware of that, state funds, and thought that might provide, it doesn't change what the plan you laid out there, Bill, but, um, in, in enhancing it, you know, maybe we can get some additional help.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the final product, not, not our product, but the product of whatever Board, or Commission, or Advisory Boards put together is gonna be, uh, look somewhat different than what, what we've done. Yeah, they'll probably use it as a basis or start, basis or starting point, but, uh, yeah.
And I think that there are many more, um, organizations in Simsbury that would, that can and would like to contribute to an affordable housing plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need, I would hope, some representation from land use commissions, because, you know, the public says, well, why don't you just do this? And of course, there's all kinds of reasons that slow us down, including, uh, profit incentive for builders and a lot of other things, so you always need somebody there to kinda point that stuff out, and town staff's too busy to do it, so I don't know what we do about that, but.
Yeah.
So we're, it, it, look, I read the minutes, I think, pretty carefully, and last July, August, I remember bringing it up, is this going to be a plan that we're writing that considers the broader issues, and there wasn't much interest in doing that, but, but the community's interested in doing that.
Right, yeah.
So I think, I think the, what came out of your meeting, Bill, makes perfect sense to me.
Okay. Alright then, what I, what I'm gonna do is, um, Wendy had sent some, uh, proposed language that we could add to our existing, uh, Affordable Housing Plan, I'm gonna see where we can fit that in, uh, and then I'll, I'll share that with everybody else, uh, I don't wanna make any decisions tonight, you know, we, we're missing a number of members of the Commission. And I don't, I don't wanna make it appear that, um, you know, we're railroading anything through, so, uh, we'll probably have to have the same discussion in two weeks.
Anyway, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So Mike, are we time constrained on this Affordable Housing Plan for 830J? Is there a time constraint?
We're supposed to get this done at the end of, by the end of, uh, 2021.
Oh.
So.
So if we finished in January, we're good?
Yes, we're good, yeah, I, I would, as we discussed in our meeting, I, I would prefer to, you know, as Bill said, let's get this one draft, oh, let's call it Phase One, complete, fulfill our requirements, um, and, and I gave the warning, you know, was out there previously when these Affordable Housing Plans were first proposed as a requirement in 2017, the state wanted to treat it similar to your plan of conservation developments, and basically say, if a community fails to develop and update their Affordable Housing Plan, um, they would be disqualified for discretionary funding. And my guess is that that, that stick is gonna show up sooner or later, and I don't wanna, I don't want this community to be put in that position where, where, where because we failed to adopt an Affordable Housing Plan, we're no longer eligible for discretionary funding.
So Bill, don't you think we can wrap this up in January?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have the final draft ready to propose, uh, at our next meeting. Depends, you know, I gotta have to look at it again, I, I, I wanna see how much would have to be added to support the, the action item that Wendy, uh, has suggested. So, I don't think, I don't think it should be a lot. Yeah, my intent would be to, uh, have the Commission vote on it, uh, at our next meeting, and then Mike, we need to understand what the, uh, approval process is. I, I think it needs to go to the Board of Selectmen, uh, does it need to go to Regional Planning Commission, or?
I gotta look at the statute, just because that's a new statute, um, I believe it's just a legislative body, but let me ver, I can verify that, um.
Yeah.
So then, your next meeting is January 12th.
Right.
That's when we.
Oh, so it's three weeks.
It's three weeks.
Yeah. That's right, January starts on a Saturday, right? No, Friday, Saturday.
Friday.
Good Friday. All I know is I got three paychecks in January.
That means I'm gonna have a long stretch between one of them.
Alright, any other, uh, you know, I don't have much other, the other, oh, you know what, there was something that, uh, Maria Capriola, um, forwarded to me, and I don't know if, I don't think it was in the Dropbox, but it's this document called Planning for Affordability in Connecticut, and it's, it's a a, a guideline that's been put together by a company called RPA, and the Connecticut Department of Housing. And it is, you know, semi-instructions on how to comply with the 8-30J. Mike, can you ask, or, you know, have, whatever you do to upload this to the Dropbox?
Good idea.
Yes.
Actually, can I, can I do it? Because, save, I, I think I have it downloaded already, let me take a look.
Yeah, yeah, that document just came out last week, so it's hot off the press, from the Department of Housing.
Okay, I just uploaded it, I think.
Let's see.
Uh, no, maybe not. Save to Dropbox, oh, I can't. No, I can't.
We'll have it up, uh, we'll have it uploaded, um, to the Dropbox, uh, first thing tomorrow for the Commission.
Okay.
And, and maybe, uh, Bill, I'll send it out to the Commission too, just so it'll be in the Dropbox, also in everyone's email.
Okay, perfect. You know, it's, it's written by a consultant, right, so, a lot of it, uh, to me, similar to the information that, um, we would have put in the P O C D, you know, population statistics, and things like that, okay. Food for thought. Alright, uh, anything else on this subject for now? I just wanna share something, let me see if I, uh, and, and I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna share, I'm not trying to, how can I say, I'm not trying to draw any conclusions, or kinda, I should, looking for it, um. I'm not saying my opinion, it's funny, I can't find it now. Damn it. Anyway, Alan, I, I sent something to you, I don't know if you ever received it?
How long ago?
Uh, last week, Mike, I sent you something today, but maybe.
I don't think I saw it, Bill, would you send it to me personally?
I, I put it to Alan Needham2@comcast.net or something?
No, it's just A Needham.
Uh, maybe, oh, okay, maybe.
A Needham2.
Well, you're talking about.
Yeah, the picture. Yeah. So.
Would you send it again, Bill?
So I, I, uh, I, I looked through the real estate transactions, just out of curiosity, and I saw one for Hendrix Place, or Hendrix Court, whatever it is, that's the, uh, Affordable Housing Development off of Climax, and there was a real estate transaction for $483,000, 600, $483,602 for one of those houses.
Yeah.
I, I don't understand.
I did get that, Bill.
Okay, you did, okay.
I did.
Uh, I, I was, I was, I was stupefied, you know, even though, even though the developer told us that the, the, the market rate once would be about 400,000.
Yeah.
They're selling, okay, so you remember, I always said mindfulness test will be as if the, if the, uh, if the developer's able to sell the land, the, the properties, and lo and behold, they're selling them.
Yeah, one after the other.
I drove by that development this past week, and there were probably four to five houses.
But you froze up, Dave.
So, each house is on what, a tenth of an acre? Tenth of an acre.
Well, it's, uh, six divided by 19.
Four, four and a half divided by 19.
Oh, not all the land is consumed, huh, four and a half, yeah.
That's right.
No, there was just four and a half acres total.
I thought it was six.
No.
Wow, okay.
Tenth of an acre with a nice house, and it costs that much money.
Yeah.
And yet, there's a really nice condo for sale, um, downtown.
Yeah.
Um, for, I think it's 198, two bedrooms, two baths, really nice.
And.
Already done inside, I mean, I just don't know why you'd spend that kind of money for that little itty bitty lot with a deed restriction.
Yeah. Well, there's no deed restriction.
If those are the units you're buying, I mean, the other ones are regular, yeah.
Yeah, and I understand that, uh, Mike, what's, what's that development, uh, Sunlight off of Hoskins, what's that called?
Cambridge Crossing.
Okay, they're selling for 450 as well.
Right.
You know, so I, I guess I have to recalibrate myself, uh.
Well, but the housing market right now is really hot, really hot, because of people working from home, just this month, it slowed down a little bit.
Okay.
I'm not sure this'll keep going like it is, but.
Yeah, well, I was, I was pleased that the snow management was excellent, uh, at Hendrick's Turner, Hendrick's Cottage Road, or whatever it's called.
I'm going up there tomorrow to see if I can see over that snowbank.
Yeah, no, I, I look forward to it, Alan, and, you know.
I am not gonna give up on.
One thing, you know, they're still building a couple houses at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
So, uh, but I thi, I think, Mike, I think all the, all the lots are being developed.
Yeah, and, and we've, and we've received the ver, the income verifications for the deed restricted units which have been sold.
Yeah.
So I mean, he has been following, he's been following his approval, and he's been selling lots, I'm actually kinda shocked.
Yep, now.
But one thing, when I was reading the minutes of the last meeting, you, you had some interesting discussions, I think, but if affordable housing comes down the pike, okay? I'm not naive enough to think there aren't some people that'll object to who might live in the houses, that's not been my experience in many years of doing this and being on various Commissions, I've never heard that come up, never, and never heard anybody hint, hint about it, ever, I've never heard a civilian say it either. But one of the things that we should recognize is that elected town folks represent the entire community, and remember the objections to Hendrick's Crossing, is it? It was not who was gonna live there, it was the density of the project.
Yeah.
So, how you have affordable housing without offending neighborhoods, that's really tricky, and that doesn't make the people in those neighborhoods bad people, although some probably are, but that's really what's going to be difficult, I think, if you put affordable housing that requires more density, I don't know how you have affordable housing unless you make it taller or closer together.
Right, yeah.
Um, how do you not offend existing neighborhoods?
Well, that's, yeah, Alan, that's why it's gonna have to be done by policy, you know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then that's where I, you know, I don't, I don't know where the, the, uh, town leaders stand on it, you know, we heard from several members of the public, they're pretty clear. Hey, you know, uh, make it, make it dense, make it, uh, tall, make it small, and keep it, you know, keep it reasonably priced, okay?
Where, that's the key.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, that, that's something that hasn't been really discussed yet. Uh, hey, Mike, one, just one thing that I thought was a little odd over at, uh, Hendrick's, what was, what's it called, Hendrick's Place?
Hendrick's Lane.
Hendrick's Lane, uh, if you, if you're pulling into, to the road, right on the right-hand side is one of those retention basins, there's no fence around it, and there were, um, sled tracks down the hill. So, you know, remember we talked about kids drowning if there was water in there? So, right now, there's no protection, and it's obvious that, was, okay, it looked like to me that some little kids were trying to sled down this 10-foot hill. Okay, and, uh, so that would be from the south, no, uh, the east side, right? Towards, yeah, towards, towards the center of the, of the catch, or the retention basin, uh, so I don't know, I can't remember, I thought there was a fence going in around that.
Yeah, I, I could, I could check the, uh, the plans, but I know that Jeff Shea, uh, was out along with the, uh, Dan Gann, who's the new project engineer, um, as part of the road acceptance process.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I would assume they checked that, and if it was required, it would have been required to be installed for the road to be accepted. Um, but I, I will verify that for you, and I can report back the next meeting.
Okay, that, that's, that's it for me, Commissioners, any, anything, any comments? I'll get back to you in a second, Mike.
I'm glad you had that meeting, Bill, that was, uh, the right thing to do, I think.
Yeah, you know, and it just kinda kicked off, you know, I think involvement from other people, other groups, and, uh, yeah, I, it was the right thing to do.
It was, yeah.
Alright, Mike, any, anything, any correspondence?
So, you, you have want, one, um, unfortunately, we, we've met about this, and I discussed it, uh, yesterday, uh, we didn't have time to get a correspondence in. Um, the assessor is asking for, and the Board of Selectmen will be asking too, down the road, uh, an opinion from the Planning Commission, uh, regarding PA 490, and what is mentioned on page 54 of the plan of conservation development. Um, specifically, um, the, one of the things that is, is a goal or objective is reviewing the criteria for PA 490 open space assessment to evaluate whether extended incentives, incentives to residentially zoned parcels less than 25 acres in size. Um, as, as the assessor is preparing to submit the grand list, she's noticed that there's a few parcels that are receiving, uh, 490, PA 490 exemption status, which are less than 25 acres, and she wanted to know, you know, an opinion from the Commission, what was, what is our, what was our intent of that goal and objective? Um, in, in the P O C D. in the P O C D? You know, did anyone have any objections for this landing, this exemption to be applied for, let's just say I own a parcel in an R40 zoning district. And so it's one acre zoning district and I have two acres. Can I apply for PA 490? Right now, technically, the way we've handled it in the past was 25 acres, but we have this goal and they're saying, you know, review incentives or residentially zoned parcels.
Okay.
If you want, maybe we could discuss it the next meeting or I can bring a little more information to the board. And I mean, in fairness, we only have, only four members here present right now. We lost Dave.
Yep.
I, I would, because, because they're asking opinion from the commission, I would prefer to have at least, you know, five or six members here present, if not the entire commission.
Yeah, please put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, I will.
Can you, can you write a paragraph or something and put it on Dropbox what the issue is so people can be thinking about it?
Yes, I will, I will. And I apologize. I mean, this came up yesterday and I, I promise that at least I'd start the conversation tonight with the commission.
Yeah, so Mike, this is that state statute that allows people to classify their property as open, a, a temporary open space or something like that?
So it, yeah, it, it gives certain protections to vacant lands where they can apply for a reduction in their property, in, in their real estate taxes and it'd be classified as open space.
Yeah.
Um, one, one of the, one of the requirements is, is that the parcel has to be identified as open space in the P O C D on the open space map, but also you can come up with other criteria. So this, the whole conversation boiled down to, there was a few parcels and I was just handling, say, one of them does not qualify based on if we just go by acres alone. So therefore, when, when we started looking at the P O C D, we saw the goal and objective, you know, as something to do. Francine wanted a little more guidance or input from the commission, so. And, and she has, she has a, a criteria which she was working on, so I can share that with the commission too, to kind of get you up to speed.
So, okay, where, what governs the, the definition of it right now? Is it a zoning regulation or?
No, it's, it's between state statute and the P O C D is what, is where she's going to defer whether they, they can be considered part of the PA 490 program for tax purposes. So you're, you're, this is like one of the rarities that your P O C D actually has. I don't want to say it was regulatory authority, but it really, it has a function as a regulation. In assisting, insisting, you know, in assisting her classification on open space for PA 490.
So we have the authority to issue an opinion on that? We do.
Bobby D was at the meeting and Bob had like, basically said, we need, the planning commission needs to weigh in first. So I, I'll, I'll make a copy of the page, the relevant page to the P O C D and, and get a little memo together outlining more of the questions, specific questions, but I, but I wanted to start that conversation at least.
Can you tell me what the state statute is?
Uh, it's, it's under Connecticut statute 12 dash, section 12 dash 107.
Okay. I'm assuming PA 490 is pretty old, right?
Yeah, but P, PA 490 is, is kind of, everyone still refers to the public act on that one.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think the property owner has to pledge to maintain the open space status for nine years, right? 10?
10.
Okay, and if you don't, then you get, you get zapped with, you know, clawback taxes and stuff.
That's correct.
Look, look back taxes, yeah.
And I could, do you want me to maybe put that also in the Dropbox, hold background on PA 490, how it works?
Yeah, and Mike, you know, uh, okay, I'm not going to pull out the P O C D at the moment, but if there's some, if, if there's something that says 25 acre minimum, you know, let's, let's get that on the table too. If, if the P O C D says, you know, reconsider the 25 acre requirement, well, where does the 25 acre requirement come from?
Yeah, no, that's, that's one thing we've struggled to find where this, where we started using is 25 acres.
Okay.
The best, the, the best I can say is, is a 25 acre dates back to the termination in the 70s, 1973. So I, I'll, I'll provide all the, I'll provide all the background data for you so you can understand where we stand.
Yep, okay. Any applications on the horizon, Mike?
Yeah, I have a potential 830G application coming on West Mountain Road.
Okay.
So. And
You've been warning us of that one for a couple of meetings.
Yeah, yeah, that's, no, 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 that, that was another one, Bushy Hill. I don't know if that's coming, but this one, West Mountain Road is coming.
Okay.
He's doing the plans as we speak. I don't know how many lots, I can't give you any information on.
Okay.
But where staff is towing up, preparing for that application.
Mike, any idea what they're going to do with all the rock when they put in the electric car dealerships? I think Canton Simsbury lying. How are they going to do that?
So they're going to, there'll be, that's, that'll be part of a rock removal operation. Some of that rock is going to be used on, or actually, what they told us, a lot of the rock will be used on site for the fact that they'll be using it for subgrade and base for the buildings, along with their planning feature development to the rear of the property. So this will accommodate road construction, et cetera. So nothing's really being sold, or at least this is what we're told. Nothing's being sold and nothing's being, there's no profit being made on a quarry operation up there.
I can't wait to see how physically they do that. Are we going to hear big booms?
Well, they'll, they'll, they're, once they start getting into the blasting operations, they're highly regulated by the Fire Marshal and statute, so it is, you know, as long as you have a responsible blaster up there, because I, I will say, in my experiences, when I worked in the southeastern part of the state, blasting was a regular out of half the construction I saw on Waterford. Model ledge down there. And it was, it was normal. And as long as you had a, a responsible blaster and was on top of this permit and following the outline, the requirements in statute and Fire Marshal, it was relatively kind of benign, you didn't really notice it.
It still was plain to watch.
Okay, good. Anybody else, anything? All right, then I'm going to make one more comment, a little snarky comment. Mike Glidden, I know you're not in your office. Even though you have the background of your office, you've been fading in and out like you're going through the Starcheck transfer, or transporter.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I lost my office upstairs and I'm now in the basement office, which I haven't really set up, so. My, my digital background last night was sitting on the pond and I thought that was inappropriate.
Yeah.
Tonight, Laura, Laura even said, because, you know, someone's going to tell you that, that the sun's, it's setting out behind you. No one knows, everyone knows you're not in the office right now.
No, it still looks very professional.
Thank you.
All right, with nothing else on the agenda and no further comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn?
Alan makes the motion. Do I have a second? That'd be rich. Okay, all in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, the motion carries unanimously 5-0-0. Well, commissioners, I hope